Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 p.m. I'm going to ask that our Clerk Wykoff please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present and establishing a quorum are Councilmembers Foulter, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. We heard from Councilmember Gamble earlier today that he will not be here this evening due to a medical-related issue within his family. Unless there is objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Seeing no objection, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item is Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask that Councilmember Hanford please lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. There's a time set aside for members of the public to come forward and talk with the Comment is limited to in-person comment only. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you're not able to finish your comments within the three minutes, you can certainly email the balance of your comments to the clerk. Her information, the city clerk at monroeawa.gov is on the screen. So we're going to go ahead and now begin public comment. As I bring people forward, I'm going to ask that they state their name and either their area of residence or association with the city, and then we'll start the timer. We have one person who signed up to speak this evening, and that's Bill Sacalas. Please come forward. And again, please state your name and affiliation with the city for the record, and then we'll start the timer.
Bill Sacalas, Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club of Snohomish County, A223 Everett, Washington. My pleasure to be in front of you again. It's been quite a while. And Mayor, City Councilmembers, Deborah, good friends. Here just really to say thank you for the many years that we've been together partnering. You know, it's been a long journey, a good journey. As you know, we started at Frank Wagner Elementary School in the bus barn in the 80s, 1980s, and then the inauguration day windstorm in 1992 blew the roof off, and we needed another home. And that's when we partnered with the city. Together with your help, actually with your funding, you built the community center at Sky River Park, and we've been the tenant in there since, I believe it was 1992, so over 30 years. We started with the first phase, which was about 13,000 square feet, which is the games room, the gym, and the multipurpose room. And then in 2006, we did some fundraising and added 3,600 square feet, which is where the teen center is today, the kitchen, and the other room down at the end of the hall. And then just recently, together, we approached the legislature and with the support of State Representative, State Rep. Carolyn Esleek, we got some state funding to add the 2,000 square feet addition for E-CAP to create 40 new E-CAP spots here for the community. And we did a ribbon cutting, I don't know, a year and a half ago, it seems like, and it's been going very well. We enjoyed working with the city staff to put all that together. Tonight on the consent agenda is the funding from the state legislature that needs to be signed off by you and by us in order for us to receive that, to recapture the money that we put into that improvement to the building. So again, I'm here just to say thank you, and we've enjoyed the partnership. We hope we've been good community members and serving the kids that come through the club every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment this evening? You may not have signed up. If you put your hand up, you can come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This one is Final Action 5.1, and this is Monroe 2044 Conference of Plan Review and Accept Revision and Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 010-2024 with our Planning Manager Turtleup.
We're not sure if Alex can join us this evening. He had a conflict before he knew we were going to finish. He knew we were finishing up. He just didn't know about our signing presentation at the end. Thank you, Jody. Okay, so as usual, I'm going to walk you through your packet this evening. The Agenda Bill itself just goes through all of the meetings that we've gone through, a refresher of all of the layers of regulation that we had to comply with or be coordinated with for our comprehensive plan update. You held your public hearing on November 12th. We had first reading of the ordinance last week, and then there was one final, a few final edits that we needed your review on. But we are at the end of a, actually, two-and-a-half-year process, a million-dollar budget. So first off, thank you for sticking with us, and I'll walk you quickly through the presentation. Next slide. All right, the final document, the cover is on the left. The final future land use map as revised at our meeting last week is on your right. It does include some changes, but the ones of concern have been reverted to the existing 2015 comprehensive plan. Next slide. And then really, the final edits were specific to the housing chapter. And as I described last week, there are two agencies that we have to get approval from. The first is the Puget Sound Regional Council must accept or, excuse me, certify our transportation plan to be eligible for grant funding. The other one is new, and that's the Washington Department of Commerce. They now have oversight of the housing chapter. Lance and I had one final conversation with them about a week and a half ago, and they wanted us to boost up the language within the actual chapter relating to housing barriers and ways that we are going to try to tackle that. As explained again last week, is we actually have many of these barriers already in your adopted housing action plan. We just brought them forward. So on this slide and the next slide is the final language. You saw some of the draft last week. And again, this is for compliance with amendments to the Growth Management Act in 2021. Next slide. Oh, question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, and to Councilmember Scarborough, thank you.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate you. All right. Next item on the agenda. Okay, next more. Let's go ahead and restart that. We should have recessed and waited to start the audio again. Okay. We are now up on item six. That's a consent agenda. I turn to the council. And insert Jeopardy music here. Councilmember Scarborough, you have your hand on your flag, and I saw that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Hanford, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, Boards, Commission, and Committee Appointments. I'm going to invite Liam McCorkle to come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Currently, there are several open positions on the various boards, commissions, and committees in the city of Monroe. The current round or call for applications first began in October 2024 and included outreach through Monroe this week, Facebook, the city's website, and at our very own city council meetings. Through this process, the city has to date received three applications for boards and commission positions, all of which being reappointments. After reviewing the applications and conducting interviews with all of the candidates, the mayor would like to present to you the following positions for reappointment. So with that, I will turn it back to the mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. So the first request that I have is for your consideration to move to confirm Brandy Blair to the Planning Commission to position four with a term to be January 1st, '25 to December 31st, '28. Brandy wasn't able to make it this evening. She messaged me earlier today due to a medical reason. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I so appreciate what Brandy Blair has brought to our Planning Commission over the years. And so I move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Brandy Blair to the Planning Commission, position four, with a term of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2028.
Fisher, second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Fisher, to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Brandy Blair. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. The second request that I have is your consideration to move to confirm the reappointment of John Wims to the Economic Development Advisory Board. This will be for a term of January 1st, '25 through December 31st, '28. And John is here. He's been serving on, I'm echoing, he's been serving on the board for a while now, and I'm going to ask John just to come forward and just explain briefly why he's interested in serving. Just come on over here. You actually need to be on mic, and since we moved the podium for the photos, just go and have a seat. And just a minute or so, just explain briefly why you're interested in continuing to serve.
Not 20 minutes, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I met with the mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Deborah's been great. I know Jacob, he was on the board. I told Mayor I'm going to retire after three more years. So you got three more years than me. I am a small business owner in Monroe, have been for 18 years. We recently moved into the attorney's office on Lewis Street. Spent a lot of blood, sweat, and tears getting that good, but I care about the city, like to help out with the board. And why, I want to do more, three more years and try to contribute any way I can.
Thank you very much, Sean. So I turn to the council. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
May I move to confirm the reappointment of John Wims to Economic Development Advisory Board, position one, with the term of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2028, or EDAB is not extended beyond the current expiration date established by Resolution 2022-13 until December 31st, 2026.
I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for requested action number two that's shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Congratulations, John. All right. The next and final request that I have this evening is your consideration to move to confirm my reappointment of Janelle Drews to the Economic Development Advisory Council? I just realized it says council. It's board, correct?
Yes, it should be advisory board.
Okay. So if we just let the record show that where it says Economic Development Advisory Council in the motions that are presented in the agenda and online, that we acknowledge that it is the Economic Development Advisory Board. Any reference to council here is intended to refer to the EDAB or Economic Development Advisory Board. Anybody object to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to that. Again, my request is that you consider reappointing, confirming my reappointment of Janelle Drews. The dates are there. And I turn to the council. Councilmember Foulter had her flag up. Councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
It's like I got Kyle's mic. I move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Janelle Drews to the Economic Development Advisory Board, position two, with a term of January 1st, move your head, Kevin, 2025 through December 31st, 2028, or if the EDAB is not extended beyond the current expiration date established by Resolution 2023 until December 31st of 2026.
I have a motion from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for requesting action number three that's shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. I didn't call you forward to say hello.
I am. Okay.
It might change the vote, so.
Hi, I'm Janelle Drews, and I am honored to continue serving on EDAB. I own Rustic Restorations, which is inside Blackboro Vintage in downtown Monroe, and it has just been a pleasure serving with other dedicated business owners, connecting relationships and fostering economic vitality in our community and enriching others' lives and why I love calling Monroe my place of work and where I live. So thank you so much. I appreciate it and look to continue serving.
Thank you.
Well, I saw the council, I was like, whoa. Well, thank you.
All right. So we already had a motion. We had a second. I was getting ready to vote. We decided then we should hear from Janelle. Janelle, I trust you didn't blow it there. So we're going to, there you go. So I'm just going to go ahead and proceed. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, and thank you both for coming out this evening. Congratulations. Next item we have on the agenda is new business item number 7.2, ordinance number 012-2024, amending Monroe Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, council meetings with Clerk Wykoff. You almost became Councilmember Wykoff. Jody, go for it.
No, thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is an ordinance to amend Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04010, which is the chapter that sets your regular meeting schedule as required by law. As you recall, last meeting, you adopted your 2025 schedule, which essentially eliminates the first Tuesday meeting as a regular meeting and reserves it for special meetings. Therefore, we need to amend our code to be in line. This is our last meeting of the year, so I am also respectfully asking that you waive your rules of procedure and adopt this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney to the council, are there any questions or a motion? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions. We talked about this last week, and it makes sense to waive our rules. So I move to waive council rules of procedure requiring two readings of ordinances and allow adoption of an ordinance upon first review.
Okay, I have a most, a most. We have a motion for item number one on the screen regarding waiving of council rules of procedure from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right, thank you. And then Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance 012-2024, amending Chapter 2.04, NMC, council meetings, amending the regular meeting days for the Monroe City Council, providing perseverance and establishing an effective date.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on the motion? This is for the requested action, item number two, that's on the slide on the screen. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, everybody. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing under 8.1 for code cleanup, Phase 1, for Monroe Municipal Code, Title 22, Unified Development Regulations, UDR. And I'm going to ask that our planner, Leanne Barr, come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Whoop, that was me. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight, we are here to hold a public hearing for our Phase 1 Unified Development Regulations Code Cleanup. I was before you a couple weeks ago with an introduction to the project. Since that time, no additional changes have been made to the proposed amendments. The new items included in your packet tonight include a staff report and a draft Planning Commission's findings of fact. My intention tonight was to run through just a brief reminder of what the project was, unless we have any members of the public here for the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move forward with the brief presentation and then answer any questions you may have at the end. Back in October 2017, the city began a complete re-rate of our Unified Development Regulations and ended in one consolidated title, Title 22, that was adopted May 1st of 2019. It was a big project at the time, and it was always anticipated that we were going to have some cleanup items, and here we are, hoping to resolve those. As soon as the UDR was adopted in 2019, staff started keeping a spreadsheet of different issues that arose as we were actually using the code and putting it into practice. And, I'm sorry, Jody, next slide. Yep. And from there, we divided the proposed changes into three categories. Phase zero are items that have either already been completed or with further research we determined were not actually needed. Phase one is where we're at tonight. Those are for errors and inconsistencies. No policy-related changes were included with Phase one. And then Phase two will be in the future, and those will be larger items that require And then Phase two will be in the future, and those will be larger items that require policy consideration at the planning commission and onto the city council level. Next slide. Some of the different reasons for the code cleanup are listed before you, I won't go ahead and go through all of those, there's examples of each in your staff report, and calling out different items from the spreadsheet. Next slide. Here's an example page from the spreadsheet, just a reminder how to go ahead and read it, each strike and delete, edit that's included in the code, in the code changes, is assigned a number that corresponds with the spreadsheet that tells you what the code reads as today, and then what the proposed changes are, and as well as the reason for that change. Next slide. So tonight, I ask that you hold a public hearing to receive public testimony, written comments, and in-person oral testimony, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, considering all background materials, public input, written comments, or oral testimony, the planning commission, oh, findings of facts, which will be brought before you at the first reading, direct staff to prepare and in adopting ordinance and schedule the first reading of said ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before I begin with public, the public hearing, for people to provide comments, do any of the councilmembers have any clarifying questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I have a long script to read, is there anybody here that would like to provide public testimony, I'm happy to read it. Jay, you're the only one here, did you want to speak to this, are you sure?
Appreciate it, no.
I do appreciate your service on the planning commission, thank you. You'd still get applause even if you came up to provide public comment at this time. Okay, so I'll do the formal call, is there anybody here that would like to provide public testimony for this public hearing, for this item? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and turn to the council. Council, is there a motion or any questions at this time, conclusions? There is no motion. There is no motion, okay, the public hearing is now closed, so you're gonna bring this back in January for final action?
Correct, yes.
Okay, there you go, stay tuned.
Thank you.
Correct, it's not next week, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Beaumont, you actually had a question, I thought, I thought it was a motion, thank you, go ahead.
No problem, thank you so much, I just wanted to say thank you to Leanne, because this, the code cleanup, you know, I've delved into this from time to time, and it is just mind-numbing, it's really minutia, but it's so important that we do it, and I just really appreciate your efforts and staff's efforts to clean this up, and it saves us staff time when what we're putting out there is clear to residents, so that they understand it when they read it, and then they don't have to question, so I just wanted to say thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Leanne. All right, we're gonna bring that back in January, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, this is item number nine, unfinished business, nine point one, selection of twenty twenty five mayor pro tem, council committees and various council appointments with clerk Wykoff again, who again almost became councilmember Wykoff.
Thank you, Mayor, I am going to deputize Liam McCorkle as my deputy for this evening to help me run the slideshow and other items for this. Before you this evening is your annual selection of mayor pro tem and committee assignments to regional boards, as well as your own legislative committees. At the last meeting, when we introduced this, it was requested that council submit their preferences to the various legislative committees, and we did receive those responses, and they are in your packet for review. I'm gonna pause there, 'cause I thought I saw a flag, so Mayor...
Yeah, you didn't see it.
Oh, you can wait, okay, sorry. So if we would like to, I know that council committees was the piece that we were a little bit wanting some more discussion on, so if we want to start with the regional committees and the mayor pro tem, we can do that, and then dive a little bit deeper into the committees, just kinda go along.
Okay. Before we, before we do that, and councilmember Hanford, I'll come right to you, I do wanna check for the committees themselves, councilmember, you like that, councilmember Fisher, you didn't identify preferences for your committees.
You emailed it to me, but there wasn't a one, two, and three, so I wasn't sure if they were in the order as preference, or if...
Let's go with, um, one, public safety, two, legislative affairs, and three, P3.
And three is P3?
Yep.
All right, and again, before we continue, are there any councilmembers, I know that we provided the packet ahead of time, do any councilmembers want to make adjustments to their priorities or to what they put in for? Councilmember Walker?
I have, I have a motion to make, but I don't have adjustments to make, no.
Could I change my priorities?
Yes, you can, that's what I was requesting, yes.
Could I change my one, two, finance?
Okay. What was that, P3?
Two, three, two, P3, and then what was your third one, I'm sorry?
Legislative.
Legislative is three, okay, got it.
Okay, and also, councilmember Gamble had requested that he be identified only on one committee, that's the finance and HR, and selected that as his number one, if that's not in your packets, I have a sheet right here that staff provided with me that's got that, so Gamble's identified one for finance, but nothing else. Do any other councilmembers want to make any adjustments at this time, and then I will acknowledge councilmember Hanford, councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
If I understand this correctly, so with Jason being added to the finance list, if I remove myself from that, then we would essentially have a full committee, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm going to remove myself from the finance list.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Are there any other adjustments that councilmembers would like to make at this time? All right, sounds good, we're gonna go ahead and you'll have, you know, we'll come back to this so you can make adjustments, again, councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to appoint councilmember Foulter as mayor pro tem for twenty twenty five.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, and a second from councilmember Beaumont for councilmember Foulter to serve as mayor pro tem in twenty twenty five. Are there any other nominations or considerations for mayor pro tem? Okay, seeing none, councilmember Foulter, are you willing to accept mayor pro tem?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion on the motion to appoint, or if that's the proper term? Yeah, appoint, appoint councilmember Foulter to mayor pro tem for twenty twenty five. Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero, thank you, you can abstain, you did, you did vote, yes, okay, good, okay, congratulations, all right. We'll go ahead and move on to the second motion, which is move to appoint councilmember blank as the council representative to the French Creek Flood Control District Joint Board. Go ahead, councilmember Beaumont.
I served and have been serving on that since I was elected, and I'm happy to continue to do so unless someone else wants to do it.
Okay, is there a motion, councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
I move to appoint councilmember Beaumont as the council representative to the French Creek Flood Control District Joint Board.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, a second from councilmember Foulter, for councilmember Beaumont to serve in the French Creek Flood Control District Joint Board, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda then is appointing a councilmember as a primary and another councilmember as an alternate for the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. Councilmember Walker? Insert jeopardy music here, okay.
Did you get Kyle's microphone?
I think so, I was the alternate for the SCT Steering Committee this year, and I would love to be the primary if councilmember Fisher is comfortable with it, and you were saying it.
So I have councilmember Walker in there, is there somebody else that would like to nominate themselves as the alternate for SCT?
I'd like to nominate councilmember Fisher as the alternate.
Okay, councilmember Fisher, are you willing to accept? Okay. So I have in there, I have councilmember Walker as the primary, and I have Fisher as the alternate, do I have a motion to that effect? Okay, so your motion is move to appoint councilmember Walker as the council representative, and councilmember Fisher as the alternate representative to the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. So that was a so moved from councilmember Scarborough, is there a second? A second from councilmember Beaumont, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to appoint a councilmember as the council representative, and another councilmember as the alternate to the Alliance for Housing Affordability. Do I have anybody that would like to volunteer for that, maybe this is the best way to go? Councilmember Fisher, does that mean you're volunteering, or you want to make a motion? To volunteer someone else? Okay, councilmember Fisher would like to continue as the primary, is there somebody that's willing to serve as the alternate? Councilmember Walker, okay. So if somebody wants to say so moved, the motion would be move to appoint councilmember Fisher as the council representative, and councilmember Walker as the alternate representative to the Alliance for Housing Affordability. Okay, I have a so moved from councilmember Beaumont, and a second from councilmember Hanford, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next item that we have then is a motion to appoint a councilmember and an alternate to the Snohomish County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, second-year term for twenty twenty five to twenty six. Do I have somebody?
Two-year term, that's what I wanted to make sure that people understood.
A two-year term, got it, a two-year term, I should put on my reading glasses, for twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six, do I have somebody that would like to volunteer? Councilmember Hanford.
Yeah, I had mentioned in the notes there that I was interested to be the representative, but have you been doing it? Again, if you'd like to continue doing it, I'm fine not doing it, I just, if that's a need.
Did you want to nominate yourself?
Can I address you? I would be willing to be the alternate this year, if you would like to be the primary.
Sure, okay. So we have, if somebody wanted to say so moved, it's move to appoint councilmember Hanford as the representative, and councilmember Foulter as the alternate representative to Snohomish County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, any discussion, oh, is there a so moved?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Foulter, a second from councilmember Beaumont, I'll take that as a second, Tammy, okay, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero, thank you. Next one is the first, oh, okay, the next one is move to assign councilmembers A and B to review and sign bills for twenty twenty five, does anybody want to volunteer for this? Okay, I have three couns... Okay, so, who wants to do it, hands up? Okay, councilmember, okay, councilmember Beaumont and councilmember Foulter are volunteering to do it, councilmember Hanford, was yours a volunteer to do it, too?
No, I move to assign councilmembers Beaumont and Foulter to review and sign bills for twenty twenty five.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, a second from councilmember Scarborough to assign councilmembers Beaumont and Foulter to review and sign the bills for twenty twenty five, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next one then is public safety, so public safety, we had councilmember Scarborough, Foulter, Walker, Hanford, and Fisher. Scarborough and Fisher requested it as their first choice, Foulter, Walker, and Hanford as their second. Does anybody want to remove their name from consideration? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Yeah, you can remove my name from consideration, and I'm interested in maybe possibly the P3.
Understood.
And instead.
Okay. P3 is where you'd like to put your money, so to speak. P3, you're Hanford, your name's not on there right now, okay, so I'm gonna put Hanford now as consideration, is that your first choice now, council, Kevin? For P3?
No.
Oh, got it, for two, okay. Is there anybody else that would like to remove their name for consideration of the public safety committee? Public safety, Scarborough one, Foulter two, Walker two, and Fisher one.
Did I adjust my...
You...
Yes.
You did, yes, so did you want to remove yourself from consideration on public safety? With you on there, that would make four, so we would need to reduce by one.
There is a third for public safety right now, it would be Fisher, Scarborough, Foulter, if you removed your name, and you did change to P3 to two, which would have made your public safety four, I think.
Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to get an idea of what P3 looks like right now with...
If you look at the matrix behind you.
Yeah, we're keeping, we're keeping tally up there. So, so councilmember Walker, did you want to keep your name on there, or?
Public safety.
Yep.
No.
Okay, all right, we're down to Scarborough, Fisher, and Foulter, that makes three, do I have a motion to, okay, go ahead, councilmember Beaumont?
I move to assign councilmembers Scarborough, Fisher, and Foulter to the twenty twenty five Public Safety Committee.
Hanford second.
I have a motion from councilmember Beaumont, a second from councilmember Hanford, to assign councilmembers Scarborough, Fisher, and Foulter to the Public Safety Committee in twenty twenty five, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero, all right. Next one is Finance and HR Committee, we have three people there, councilmembers Gamble, Walker, and Hanford. Does anybody else want to add their name, or adjust their names on the Finance HR Committee? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody interested in making a motion? Go ahead, councilmember Hanford.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm happy to not serve on that committee if somebody else is wanting to serve on it, otherwise, 'cause I've served on it before, a few times, but I'm happy to serve on it if nobody else wants to.
You're gonna, you'd take that one, councilmember Fisher? Okay, so councilmember Fisher is going to replace councilmember Hanford on the Finance HR Committee? Okay, and councilmember Hanford, you had your flag up first?
Yep.
Yes, I'll move to assign councilmembers Gamble, Walker, and Fisher to the twenty twenty five Finance Human Resource Committee.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, a second from councilmember Beaumont to assign councilmembers Gamble, Walker, and Fisher to the Finance HR Committee for twenty twenty five, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilmembers Beaumont and Walker, was that an aye?
Did you say aye?
Okay, thank you, all opposed? Motion passes six zero, okay, Legislative Affairs Committee, councilmember Fisher?
He can take me off, I want him.
Okay, we're gonna take councilmember Fisher's name off?
Take my name off.
We're gonna take councilmember Scarborough's name off? Okay. Take councilmember Walker's name off? All right, councilmember Hanford, you have your flag up.
I move to assign councilmembers Beaumont, Foulter, and Hanford to the twenty twenty five Legislative Affairs Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to assign councilmembers Foulter, Hanford, and Beaumont to Legislative Affairs Committee in twenty twenty five, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero, thank you. Last one then is the P3 Committee, we have councilmembers Scarborough, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker as two, and Fisher as three. Who would like to nominate, who, who, is there anybody that would like to remove their name from the P3 Committee?
I can take my name off.
Okay, councilmember Scarborough's name will be removed from the P3 Committee? Okay, councilmember Hanford?
I'm happy to take my name off if we need to.
Okay, is there anybody else that would be willing to remove their name from the P3 Committee? All right, councilmember Hanford, you're okay with your name being removed? Yep, okay, your name is removed, we now have three names, is there a motion? Councilmember Beaumont?
I move to assign councilmembers, I hope I get this right, Beaumont, Fisher, and Walker? To the twenty twenty five Transportation, Planning, Parks, and Recreation and Public Works P3 Committee.
Hanford second.
I have a motion from councilmember Beaumont, a second from councilmember Hanford, to assign councilmembers Beaumont, Walker, and Fisher to the P3 Committee in twenty twenty five, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero, thank you very much, everybody, and congratulations on your new or continuing assignments. All right, next item on the agenda is councilmember reports, which I almost skipped, 'cause it's at the very bottom of my page, you go ahead and start off in the middle today, councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor, well, let's see, gosh, today, councilmember Foulter and I attended the chamber luncheon, which was very exciting, and I wore a finery, and tomorrow night, I think a number of us are going to the Snohomish County Tomorrow Event, which will be great. Just wanted to take this opportunity to wish everyone a wonderful holiday, and I am very honored to serve with this group and staff, happy holidays to you all as well, and really just love doing this, and love making Monroe, trying to make Monroe a better place, so, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Beaumont, councilmember Walker, we'll do inside out today.
I would just, yeah, nothing to report, just a gift to be a part of this city and to serve with you guys, and to benefit from the services of everyone that works with the city, just appreciate you all.
Thank you, councilmember Walker, councilmember Foulter?
Well, I know that councilmember Hanford is gonna say something amazing, so I'd like to pre-second whatever he's gonna say, because I know it's gonna be something about the gratitude for being able to serve with you all, and just another year under our belts, and thank you all very much, and I wish you the merriest of Christmases, and that's all.
Thank you, councilmember Fisher?
So I can start out with the gratitude that I have towards, no, I'm kidding, thanks for this speech, though, no, it truly is great working with all of you up here, staff is amazing, I always hear good things from the public if they're, have all of their wits about them, about their conversations they have with staff, and they're able to understand things, I really appreciate all the work that you guys put into this, yeah, this is just a really good thing, so I really wish everybody happy holidays, obviously, and I really like how professional this position has made me, with my attire. With that, just happy holidays, everybody, and I'm glad to be here, and I'm fortunate to work with such, such great people.
Thank you, councilmember Fisher, councilmember Scarborough?
Well, everybody said everything, so I guess, no, thank you, yeah, second, there was, ditto, and I think I wins the competition for the uniform here tonight, and it's been a pleasure working with you and the staff, it's always amazing what you guys put together to give us to work on, Mayor, Deborah.
I will enjoy my last year with you, as I'll tell you now, I won't be running after next year, so if you want to go out and beat the bushes and find people to volunteer, it's time to start looking, talk it up, it's a, it's a great bunch of people, it's a great, it's great to be on the inside looking out, trying to figure out what's going on in Monroe, instead of the outside looking in, so, thank you to the staff for indulging my desire for a packet that I can read, instead of having to do it all online, we've tried to discuss whether we can diminish that a bit for next year, that it's not quite so cumbersome, and I thank you, and Mayor, and Deborah, and thank you, everybody, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor, ho, ho, ho. Those are inspirational words, no, it is, it's totally true, everything everyone said, this is just an enjoyable thing, I look forward to San Ice, I look forward to coming here, even though this building's cold, I do look forward to it, so, I would do wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, after all this work with the overhaul, I hope your department especially gets some rest and relaxation, and some eggnog, and some good stuff. I was gonna just ask, well, two things, it was a pleasure and an honor to serve as your mayor pro tem this year, and I appreciate that, and looking forward to have this server next year, and then for these different boards and, and everything that we just signed ourselves up for, if there's a way that we could get an email with the exact dates and times that, you know, we are committing to, so that we can make sure they get added to our... you know, we are committing to, so that we can make sure they get added to our schedules, that'd be great. Because in the past, I've signed up for something, and then like halfway through the year, I'm like, oh, wait a minute. I never heard, you know, no one ever told me the dates, and so, just hindsight's always better, right? So, and then I, I do look forward, Councilmember Fisher and I serve on the L F One Board for the, for the city, and with Dan and the team. And so, we're still doing that as well.
Yeah, I think so. I didn't see it on air.
No, we're lifers.
Well, that's L F One.
So, yeah. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you all. The, going on to item number 11, Staff Department Reports. The Finance and Parks Department Reports are in your packets. There's no spoken report this evening. If you've got any questions, please go ahead and email me and Deborah, and we'll make certainly follow-up with the appropriate staff member to get responses to your inquiries. Okay? Next item on the agenda then is item number 12, Mayor Administrative Reports, State Administrator Report Extended Agenda.
All meetings are canceled until, until January 14th, so we will look forward to seeing everybody back here in the new year.
All right. Any questions or concerns about the extended agenda? All right. State Administrator Report.
I also wanted to just add my thank you to the City Council and to the staff for the work that we managed to accomplish this year. At the beginning of the year, it seemed a little insurmountable because there was so much on our plate. And I'll just briefly highlight a few things that we did accomplish, because sometimes I think what happens is, we're so focused on accomplishing what we've done, and then we just move on to the next thing. And so I really appreciate the mayor taking the time today to, you know, do the extra step to celebrate really the comprehensive plan. As Kate Turtleow mentioned, that was two and a half, almost three years of work. And it's remarkable, because it is hard in this day and age to keep a team together, both on the consultant side and on the staff side. And oftentimes, that's what causes disruption in a process, is that when you have that staff turnover. So, just a overwhelming level of appreciation that I have for Lance and for Kate and the rest of the team. John, I know was a part of that as well, but it, it took a team. So, comp plan, but also the budget, the two-year budget. I don't know how many of you have been paying attention to what's going on in the cities, particularly to the south of us, but there are a number of them that are really struggling with a balanced budget. And again, for this budget, it really was a team effort, because Becky Hassard, who had been kind of leading our budget process for the last five or six years, took another position, and so that really left the rest of us then to have to really understand the budget this year. So I know there was a lot of growth from staff internally on the budget, but again, thank you to Council and to Mayor both for just all of that collaboration and work so we could come together with a balanced budget. Zoning Code Amendments, I was looking back at some work that we did last December and saw that, we had talked about those zoning code amendments, and we just managed to adopt those zoning code amendments just recently for downtown changes to allow city use, government use in our own buildings that we purchased last December. It's hard to believe that was just a year ago. Collective Bargaining Agreement, so that's something that Ben Worthing led with our sergeants. Those bargaining agreements always take an extended amount of time, and it's really important, because when we're able to extend them out over a couple of years, that allows them for some real stability, both from a budget perspective and from a staff perspective, too. Everybody knows what is expected. Marijuana Regulations, when Zach Humphries left us, right before he left and right before Liam came on board, we had two items. We had marijuana regulations and we had speed zone cameras. And I said to Zach Humphries, I said, you can pick which one you want, because you're the person that's going out the door and we've got somebody else coming in. He smartly picked the marijuana regulations. We thought maybe that was gonna be the one that was gonna require more discussion, but that one actually kind of managed to make it through the process relatively quickly, which was great, because Zach was able to then close the chapter on that and move on to the next chapter of his life. And Liam, every project, it seems that we've assigned to Liam since he's come on board. I've said to him, this one should be a slam dunk, and then it never has turned out to be a slam dunk. So I've stopped saying that, and I will never say that again to Liam. It's just like, here's your assignment, good luck with that. That's where he's gonna be heading on from here on out. Proposition one, I know it wasn't successful, but I do appreciate the council's support for staff particularly, and I know that was really important for members of our Parks Department particularly. And I know that we're gonna be back talking more just about what can we do to assist that Parks Department. Mike Farrell is going to be retiring in February, and so we will have some changes in the Parks Department. We do have a transition plan, and that'll be happening over the next couple of months. He won't be at City Council meetings. He actually has a vacation planned with his wife, so they're gonna be gone for a couple of weeks in January, and then it'll just be a short time back with us in February. So we'll have our opportunities to thank him for his service. For those of you that don't know, he is our first Parks Director. Parks was a part of Public Works before Mike came along, and Mike has grown that department and has been extremely successful in it. Also want to just recognize that tonight, you adopted the city's social media policy. That's been in the works. You would think that adopting a policy would be a relatively simple thing, but it has to go through multiple layers of review before it finally comes to you. And thank you to Ben Worthing for sticking with it and finally getting that policy in front of you and adopted this evening. So, anyway, a big thanks to all of you and to the staff that does the, does the backend work to make sure that, you know, everything that we present to you is really kind of ready for public review and for your look and feedback on it. So we really appreciate the work that you all do in order to make Monroe the, the great place that it is. And I feel so blessed to be able to work for all of you and to work for the community as well. So then, the rest of it, for my City Administrator's Report, it's just, you know, kind of the regular updates. It was already previously mentioned, so Snoomish County Tomorrow. A reminder that the state legislative session is going to convene on Monday, the 13th, for a 90-day session. And I said to Liam, buckle in, because this is where it just comes fast and furious, and the first 90 days of the year will just pass by in a blur because of the legislative session work that we do. And on that note, the AWC Legislative Conference is scheduled. It is actually the 19th and 20th. Typically, though, we have members of this group that arrive the night before. On Tuesday night, we have a dinner together, and then we do our work in order to learn more about how to advocate for the city and to work with our state legislators. If you're interested in attending that, if you could have your information to Liam by Friday, the 20th, for registration, that would be extremely helpful.
So you want to say the 18th, 19th, 14th?
That's correct. That is the, the standard scheduled we've had for the last couple of years.
Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a way for us just to give Liam a verbal right now?
Sure.
Like I'm planning to be?
Who's planning, who's planning to be there? Put your hands up. Liam, write down everybody's name that's up there today.
Jody, we need a notice potential for him.
It's going to be.
Would you like, would you like a motion to cancel the 18th? Do you want a motion to cancel the 18th today?
Um, yes.
We'll leave it alone for now, just in case something swirly happens. Oh, you just want to do that?
Yeah.
You have, go, Councilmember Hanford?
I move to cancel the meeting, City Council meeting on Tuesday, February 18th.
2025.
2025, yes.
Okay. I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Hanford for the first. Second is Councilmember Foulter to cancel the council meeting on Tuesdays, February 18th, 2025. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Who, who had the floor?
I'm finished.
You're finished? Okay. Okay. Do we know if the AWC Legislative Conference is in, where it's going to be held this year?
Yes. It is back again at the location that it was last year.
Oh, same place as last year in Lacey?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the college that's there.
St. Martin's?
St. Martin's, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Mayor's Report. So first, last week, in addition to a number of other things, I interviewed three candidates for the, two for E D A and one for Planning Commission. Thank you, Council, very much for confirming my appointments this evening. I also, yesterday, I think it was yesterday, met with Luke Esser and talked with him about the upcoming legislative session. So, those are a couple of contacts that I had with folks. Looking back on this year, you know, Deborah's, Deborah's already pointed out a number of the things that, that we all, as a community, were able to accomplish. And I just really hope that over the next couple of weeks, you'll just take a moment, just in silence, and just really kind of think about and feel the different things that we were able to accomplish in our community this last year. I know that with Parks, you all were able to get another FTE that'll be really important to help out our Parks Department in the future. Prop one didn't work, but, you know, sometimes things don't work out, and you'll have the opportunity to look at that again in the future. With our Parks, we've been getting a lot of very positive comments about the way our Parks facilities are maintained, and I am so very thankful for the Parks that drew me, my wife, and our kids here back in 20, 2000, in 2000. H R I T, Ben has been doing a great job with his group. Our I T, our I T systems have continued to be stable this year and secure, which is great. Ben has continued doing a great job with his department in recruiting personnel. And to that, with our Police Department has been doing a great job getting out there and doing their job, but at the same time, when we talk about recruitment, we've been recruiting a lot of people, including having somebody come back to work for us again who had left during the pandemic to go work in another state and decided to come back here because things are actually better here. So, I really appreciate the fact that when there are other police departments out there that are having a hard time recruiting staff, that not only are we recruiting people, but we're recruiting laterals. And that's something that is, saves us, you know, nine to 15 months to get somebody through the academy, through their training with their, by themselves, you know, until they're by themselves out in the field. So, Ben, and to our Police folks, thank you for all the work you've been doing on recruiting. That, that's awesome. Planning and Building has had a really busy year. We had the comprehensive plan that you all worked on. We, we celebrated this evening. We had a lot of things going on with Building also. I remember all the code enforcement issues that we had earlier this year, and in some cases, we're still having a couple of issues. I really commend the Council for supporting our staff. I know that we're right there supporting our PD on a regular basis for the work they do with code compliance, but when it comes to Planning and Building, a lot of jurisdictions will turn their backs on the Planning and Building Departments. You all didn't do that, and I really, really, really appreciate that, especially having served as a former planner myself. To have elected officials that are willing to stand up and say, look, these are the rules. There's a process if we're gonna change the rules, but these are the rules today, and we're gonna support the staff, it really means a lot. So I thank you all for, for doing that. And Lance, I thank you and your department and, and everybody in your office for the work that you've done this year. Public Works, Jake and his group, they've just done a really significant amount of work, you know, with infrastructure, but the thing that stands out most in my mind right now is that this time next year, I'm very certain that we'll be back at the municipal campus. We will be in a city hall that, when I started as a council member in 2003, needed to be redone, probably 10 years before I started in 2003, it needed to be redone. And for me, looking at my last year serving as mayor, to see something that, when I started 11 years ago, I never would have thought that I would have even possibly considered that we would be redoing that municipal campus and that city hall building, to be where we are today is just something that, you know, it's, it's amazing. And when I started off on this third term, one of the things I talked to staff about is that it's very important for us to get this done during this last term, because we have a council that gets it, and we have a mayor that gets it, and we had all the pieces to make that happen. So I'm really looking forward to that next year. But again, Public Works is doing a lot, and Jaka, I turn to John. Please thank your staff also for us, for all the work that they're doing in a number of spaces, including the campus. Human Services, Rachel, we have a really great program here where we help out people in need. So I don't, I don't know that PD really gets the, gets the, the focus that they should. In the state of Washington, we do a lot around, first, there are two different types of police officers you can train. One are the, one are the warrior officers, sort of that mentality. The other one are guardians. In the state of Washington, we train them to be guardians. Here, we talk about de-escalation a lot. You want to make certain that everybody's able to make it home at night safe, or if necessary, it might be jailed. But we want to make certain everybody makes it home alive and safe. And part of being able to make that happen is having an effective human services group. And so Rachel and Roger and other folks that are working in that space and coordinating with, you know, coordinating with PD, it's an integral part of the work that is law enforcement into creating whole communities, and I'm really feel thankful for your continued investment in that space and for the work that our partners are doing there. I think I've, oh, Budget and Finance, I miss Becky. I've really appreciated Greg and Deborah in this go-around with the budget, and I'm really looking forward to our new Finance Director starting in January. A lot of what I've mentioned here can't be done without the budget. And so, we've been really fortunate to have really great talent in the positions of Budget and Finance these last several years. It's really important that we maintain stability with the council and with the mayor position to make certain that we continue to attract really great talent that's able to do all this work that has happened this year and in the last 11 years that I've been serving here. So, Councilmembers, I ask that you continue to, to give thanks for the, the team that we have here that does all this work. Yeah, him too. I'll get to him in a second. Okay, I'll get to him now. And Zach, Zach, turn your camera on. You're not here, so I, I forget you. Hi, Zach.
Hello, Mayor.
Zach, I really appreciate you and Ogden Murphy and Wallace and everything that you do there to keep us out of trouble, but more importantly, sometimes lawyers, and I really don't know what this means, I should look this up somewhere, but they're seen sort of as tools, where, you know, you, you, you're a tool that helps us do the right thing, right? And you do have attorneys out there that will try to push sort of the activist or an advocacy agenda. You don't do that. You give us choices, and I really, really, really appreciate that, Zach. You're, you know, you talk about belt suspenders. Sometimes I think it's belt suspenders, helmet, and, you know, an air cushion, bubble wrap, yeah. I, I really appreciate the work that you do to provide really professional, really objective services to our city, you know, to our staff, to me, and to the council, and I thank you, and please extend our thankfulness also to the rest of your team there at Ogden Murphy and Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly will, and on behalf of myself and my firm, thank you very much, and to the rest of the council for the opportunity to have served and represented the city of Monroe during this past year, as always, has been an honor and a pleasure, and I, I wish the happiest of holidays to you and all of your families. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And last, the team that I work most closely with are administrative staff or the executive department. Jody, thank you. I, I appreciate all the work that you do to keep things working really smoothly. Thank you so very much. Liam, you're still new here, and, and Zach Humphries, if you ever listen to this, I really appreciate the work that, I really appreciate the work that both you and also Zach did and that you're still doing here. Having a management analyst is extremely important to provide sort of that additional capacity that's necessary to get things done. And then I do appreciate that while you're a management analyst, that you help me with my calendar, especially having a regular job during the day, it's really, really helpful. And I appreciate the work that you and also that Zach did, to just sort of listen at times and help me think through things, and including scheduling, so thank you. And Deborah? None of this, none of this could really occur without you there, coordinating everything, driving things, getting things done. You, you all may not realize this, but I get up at four twenty in the morning, and I know that's not a joke. I get up at four twenty in the morning. But every once in a while, she actually takes a phone call with me while I'm in, while I'm driving into Seattle, like at five fifteen a.m. And I, you know, whether it's a night discussion during the day or one of those early morning commutes that I have, it is so important for me. And, and I'm so thankful to have you there to be able to listen, talk through things. You're professional. I don't know how many of these things you have, but, I mean. She's, she, she, she does a really awesome job at tracking things. When we lost our city administrator, Jean Brazel, I had worked with Deborah once upon a time when I was an analyst at Snoamish County and was kind of hoping she might consider coming back here. And she, she came here, and I really, really value working with you. We have a partnership that is very, very important, that allows our community to get a lot of work done. And I thank you so very much for that. Lastly, lastly, the Council. We, you all have done a really good job of having expectations that are reasonable. You all have done a really good job of asking good questions. I know every, every once in a while, things get a little bit heated, but not as much as other places. And when things get heated here, it's, it's more like you're passionate about something. It's not like you hate one another. And, and that's really important. And it's sad that I have to say that that's really important because the way communities ought to work is the way that they work here. You work together. I don't see fractures. I don't see people yelling at one another. You're not threatening one another. You're asking good questions, and I really appreciate that. We, the, one of the reasons why we have such a good budget today is we did really intelligent things. You all didn't ask us to spend all the ARP dollars that came in to hire a bunch of new positions that would be ongoing things. I came forward and said I wanted to do one-time things, and I wanted to get it out, get the funds out to help people in need today. And I had my colleagues in other cities say, "What are you doing? What are you going to have to show for all this money?" And I said, "I'm going to have, what I'm going to have to show is the fact that, that this person was able to pay their bills today, or this person was able to keep their business open another month, which maybe led to being able to keep it open much longer." And, you know, I, I so appreciate the fact that, that you all take a very, a very similar approach to budgeting and to decision-making that I do. And I, I thank you for that. It's been a really great year this year. I look forward to working with you all, all of you, one more year. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I will see you in January. I have nothing further for the agenda. I monologued for a long time. We're not having an executive session this evening. Yep, we'll have that in January. So with that said, thank you all for your service. Thank you for your time. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I'll see you in January. We are adjourned for the rest of the year.